All right, thank you everybody for that. We're going to move on to 6.6 or 9:15 a.m., public hearing, consideration of an ordinance to regulate smoking and commercial tobacco use in the unincorporated areas of Lake County. And we have our health services team, Liberty Francis and Director Arton, and I'm going to bring up the presentation. All right. Just let me know when you want to move on with the slides.
Good morning, and thank you for having us back again today to continue the conversation about the ordinance to prohibit smoking and tobacco use. So first, I'm going to introduce this big lovely stinky container. I'll keep it over here so you don't have to smell it.
You had to bring it closer to me.
So this represents, over the last month, my staff has been trained by the San Francisco Estuary. They have a model for tobacco product waste monitoring, and we have observed six different parks in Lake County over the last month. This represents over 833 pieces of tobacco product trash, which also includes cigarette butts, cannabis, single-roll, pre-roll wrappers, there are lighters, matches, vape packaging, and parts, as well as cigar tips, zen pouches, and tobacco pouches of various kinds. So this is only the beginning of our observation task that was given, so our hope is to look at all county and city parks. So this, when we're using the model for the San Francisco Estuary, we have to map out a certain area, put up cones, we take pictures, and we identify tobacco product waste by quantity and type. So we will, when we're finished with this product observation, we will be able to bring back the statistics and what that looks like in our county. So it's a snapshot of the big picture. So when we did our observations, we're looking at the kid areas of parks. We looked at the actual playgrounds and the vicinity close to those playgrounds. We looked at areas like the boat launches, the picnic areas, and that is the product waste that we have picked up so far.
Which parks?
So we have currently went through Library Park, Austin Park in Clear Lake, and we have done all four parks in Kelseyville. So the two in Kelseyville and the two county parks that are out by the lake, well, sorry, the one out by the lake. But we did two different sections, the one where the softball fields were and the boat launch at that park. So I think the most disturbing that we've seen so far was the actual gated kid area at Library Park, but then also the softball fields. There was over 400 cigarettes and 62 pouches that were in the bleacher areas of that one softball field, Field A. So that's within, you know, where they're playing, the kids are there to either watch the games or play the games themselves. So I just wanted to start my presentation with, we really do have a problem. Okay, so if you're advancing slides, okay, awesome.
Can you hear me now?
Better.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. So we had previously talked about commercial tobacco costs, and on the left is a picture that was submitted for the Born to Breathe Project that our fellow NorCal for Health does, has presented. This was a Lakeport youth, and she drew this picture in representation of your healthy lungs and your cost to smoking. So what we know is that $9.8 billion in healthcare costs from smoking-related issues, $1.4 billion in loss from productivity from illnesses related to tobacco use, $3.8 billion is what it costs our state Medi-Cal program annually to assist folks that are using those products or exposed to those products. And then our tobacco product waste in California cities spend over $41 million yearly to clean up this tobacco product waste and litter. Next slide. Okay, so this is Lake County's grade, and although it's a little bit small on the screen, I apologize for that, but it addresses our, American Lung Association puts out this grade every year for each jurisdiction in California. And currently, the Lake County unincorporated area has an F. It will change because you just passed the tobacco retail license, so under that category, reducing the sales of tobacco products and looking at how that affects our youth and community. So that area of our grade will go up. And when you're looking at this ordinance here for smoke-free outdoor, if something like this is passed in the unincorporated area, that will also bring up your grade. Currently, our city of Clear Lake has an A in their smoke-free outdoor air policy, and so we're looking to model that throughout the county. Next slide. So the only way to eliminate secondhand exposure is to prohibit smoking and vaping near air intakes, entryways, enclosed spaces, and outdoor areas in which others gather. Smoke-free policies can improve human health, they can reduce healthcare costs for those exposed to secondhand smoke, it can reduce fire risk associated and associated costs for all of those people littering, throwing their cigarette butts out, maybe thinking that they've extinguished it and they haven't. We have a lot of fires throughout the year that are home fires related to smoking as well, reducing property maintenance for rental turnover costs. So one thing we know is third-hand smoke is the sticky, ooey, gooey nasty residue that sticks to the walls, the carpets, the drapes, the, you know, your furnishings, and that doesn't ever go away. Next slide. So what does our implementation plan look like? We were tasked the last time we were here to meet with the directors throughout the county employee, or, sorry, county departments. And so with that, one of the things that they had suggested is that we have a tier plan to roll this out at all of our locations that are owned and leased by the county, as well as the unincorporated areas. So if this policy is adopted, we're looking at a 90 days from adoption, that smoking will prohibit it 30 feet from entrances and operable windows of buildings in unenclosed areas in all properties owned and leased by the county of Lake, recreation areas, service areas, and outdoor dining areas, which are defined in the ordinance, if you're interested in knowing what those areas are specifically designed. And then 180 days from the policy adoption, looking at tobacco and smoke, sorry, smoking and tobacco used to be prohibited in the unenclosed areas of those spaces that we mentioned before. So the directors wanted to make sure that it was understood that some of these properties currently have a smoking area that either employees or clients in public that come to their place of business would be able to use these products. And so they felt it was necessary to have a tiered plan to prepare for a plan on how to use those products in other places than on our county-owned and leased properties.
Also to give them time to start a tobacco cessation program if they desire to quit, and I believe our human resources, if there are employees that are desiring to quit, do the implementation of this policy will be supported with some funding for those products.
And so our human resource department is going to also incorporate cessation support within their wellness letters and be able to give the resources through Kickit, California. And some of those employees will be eligible for free tobacco cessation resources and encourage them to work with their doctors to see what products are best for each of them individually. Next slide. Okay, and I guess implementation enforcement. Health services will provide community education regarding this ordinance upon adoption. A person or employer that has control of the area in which smoking and tobacco use is prohibited shall post clear signs that say no smoking, no tobacco use, and we'll have the specifications for that are in the ordinance as well. County staff will communicate the requirements of this article to the public event organizers using county-owned or leased properties. The Director of Human Resources, as we stated, will conduct education through our wellness plan and provide guidance to the person or employers about compliance. Resources and support for tobacco cessation are available and will be regularly promoted as appropriate and in accordance with standard of ongoing support to the employees and the public. No person or employer shall intimidate, threaten, or any way affect retaliation of any person who seeks to maintain compliance of this order, ordinance, sorry. Next slide. And that's, that's it.
So I have two questions for you before we open it up for discussion. First off, the human resources appreciate the collaboration, but none of that is within the ordinance itself. So while it says on your presentation that they shall provide educational program, it's just, it's something that they would do because they already provide information about healthcare benefits and all the other things, so it's not something that we would be impacting or affecting through this ordinance because it's not within the context of it.
Yeah, she was at, our Director of Human Resources was at that meeting that we held, and she had explained it's something they can add to their wellness newsletter and support for that education.
And that makes sense. And then in your, I'm going to go back to this, in your list of what would go into effect, there is one that's missing from there, and that's the impact to outdoor areas, most likely the recreational areas of multi-unit complexes. Would you like to speak about that and explain that?
So those would be in the multi-unit housing complexes that have recreation areas, swimming pools, playgrounds, some of them have community centers, so it would address those locations within the unincorporated area of the county. So it's not addressing, at this point, the actual dwelling.
Now, the interior.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
All right. Bringing it to the board for any comments or questions. Supervisor Green?
Thank you. It's good to see you this morning. There's going to be a little bit of a drill down, and I figure you probably knew that going in, so I apologize.
Hopefully we're prepared.
And to start off, just a general observation. So we already have, state law already prohibits smoking in certain places, including in county workplaces, 25 feet outside the current thing. We're going to go to 30 feet in the initial, and then we're going to ban it entirely.
If we can pause for one second. Mr. Houston, is it possible to fix the video so the public can see the conversation?
Currently, it's a stairway.
Thank you.
My face.
I apologize for the interruption.
I enjoy that video. So I'm starting in the whereas's, basically, front to back of the ordinance. So clearly, there would be any number of good reasons to at least consider a policy like this, but even in the whereas's, I distinguish between secondhand smoke exposure within enclosed areas and workplaces and what is being proposed in this ordinance, a much broader ordinance applying to outdoor spaces. So for example, on the first page, it says, "Research indicates exposure to secondhand smoke increases the risk of coronary heart disease by 25 to 30 percent, and the risk of stroke by 20 to 30 percent." There's no citation of that research, but I'm going to go out on a limb and say that metric applies to exposure indoors or in workplaces or something like that. It would not necessarily apply to outdoor exposure. Can you provide any context to that stat?
I can provide you the citations that were previously in the copy that was provided, and I was asked to remove them because it wasn't part of the official document.
Okay.
But I can provide that for you.
All right. Similarly, secondhand smoke kills more than 400 infants every year. My guess is that's going to be indoor exposure related to parental tobacco use, not necessarily outdoor exposure to secondhand smoke. So appreciate the citation of that research if you can provide it. The very bottom of the first page, whereas number two, talking about electronic smoking aerosol, I can't read this sentence, it's kind of a non sequitur, so I assume it meant to say something, but I don't think it got there by the time the editing was done, so I'm just highlighting that. Second page of the whereas's, no citation again, but it says exemptions and loopholes in smoke-free workplace laws disproportionately impact low-income communities. And I'm a little puzzled without the citation, and even with the citation, I find this particular clause objectionable, you know. I don't know for a fact that that's true, but I don't know that if we're going to create this public policy that we need to be distinguished being between communities of color and who's smoking and what types of job classification. So I'm probably, it's probably just me, but I found that particular clause offensive. It cites, "There is no constitutional right to smoke." Perhaps that's true, but I would point out equally, there's no constitutional right for this board or any other board to act in an arbitrary or capricious manner unless we're doing data-driven things. So again, the data here in the whereas's probably skews more toward indoor settings and workplace settings as opposed to the outdoor exposure, which is the focus of this. Top of page three, there's no citation, but it says very definitively that cities and counties have legal authority to adopt local laws that prohibit all tobacco use indoors and outdoors in areas not covered by state law. And it's more of a question, but is that declarative of existing state law, or are you citing to case law specific to tobacco use? But I think that's a very bold statement, and without some type of citation to explain that, I can't hang my hat on that. And that's just in the whereas's. So in the actual impact of this ordinance, I guess it was recommended by department heads, but the 90-day transition period doesn't make a lot of sense to me. We already have, again, signage that prohibits smoking within 25 feet of exits to go for 90 days with 30-day foot signs, which gives you what, a 16-foot increase in that buffer? Makes nonsense to me and creates a signage burden because you're going to have to go for 90 days of 30-foot prohibition signs, and then you're going to go 180 days after adoption where everybody gets signage prohibiting basically all unenclosed areas as defined. And although you didn't drill down into it, recreational areas, service areas, outdoor dining areas, basically all outdoor areas, you know, so the geographic sweep of this ordinance is huge, and I think everyone should know that and acknowledge that when they get ready to vote on this. It's not a highlight of this ordinance, but cannabis smoke is called out. I think one practical effect of this would be prohibit state-licensed cannabis events. We have another department working with the Cannabis Task Force that's taking a look at things like that, whether we should have state-licensed cannabis events in the unincorporated county, and if we don't ban, if we ban them in the county, then where are they going to go? So section relating to tobacco waste, tobacco waste is called out as a social harm. You've brought the cigarette butts, and I get it, yet the tobacco waste section would prohibit the provision of waste receptacles and basically ban ashtrays and what have you. So on the one hand, you're saying tobacco waste is a really, really bad thing. On the other hand, you are literally prohibiting any provision of waste receptacles.
It says within the boundaries of the area where it's prohibited.
Yeah.
So you can have those receptacles outside the perimeter of that area.
Getting near the end, under violations and remedies, it says, "Any person who violates any provisions may be subject to any state or county enforcement remedies." That's perhaps intentionally broad, but it's also vague to the point of being close to void for vagueness. To the extent there is any enforcement by county staff, it looks like the person in control of any leased or county-owned facility would be the designated smoking cop. But there is no equivalent call-out to who's going to enforce this on non-county properties. So I guess the assumption is going to be private property owners, including owners and managers of multifamily unit housing, not previously subject to regulation, are going to stand up and enforce this on their own. And I kind of get a sneaking suspicion they're not going to. Finally, under the environmental review, there's a couple boilerplate secu exemptions. I don't find either of them applicable in this case. By the terms of the ordinance, you're actually calling out environmental harms associated with tobacco and tobacco products. You claim benefits of this, but again, we don't know where smokers are going to go. If they can't smoke in these public places, they're going to have to go somewhere else. As we've learned, maybe you guys haven't, but there's a fair amount of case law in the cannabis space that when you ban dispensaries or cannabis smoking in one place and you push it to another place, there can at least be some potential for environmental impacts, and there is case law saying that that should be studied. So I don't find the secu exemption compelling in this case. Long story short, this vote's going to happen the way it's going to happen, but just as we mentioned in the science symposium, we rely on the general public to support our governments and the public policy goals that this government sets. And I think, good intentions aside, and I take you at every good faith that this is good intention, this is tobacco prohibition. Minus the prohibition on retail sales, we did pass the TRL ordinance, and you are going to regulate the sales, but you didn't prohibit it. What you're prohibiting here is the use, basically, of tobacco products in virtually all public settings, public and private. I find that to be overreach, and I think that's actually going to undermine support for enforcement of this law, assuming you even get to a point where you can attempt to enforce it. So I would have loved to see a more limited ordinance that applied only to county workplaces. I know that wouldn't get your A grade with the American Lung Association, but American Lung Association doesn't run this county. So there's a balancing of interests here. I don't think the Balancing Act is balanced in this case, and I don't think this is a fully realized ordinance, open to some ideas about how to shrink it to a more manageable, more respectful footprint. But it is what it is today, so we're going to proceed on that basis. But I'll just highlight, I won't be supporting it as presented today.
Thank you for your comments. So some of those things I will have to provide you later with the citations, but one of the areas that I can speak to is where you were questioning whether or not your board has the jurisdiction to prohibit smoking and tobacco use. This was something that the state allowed for any local municipality to enforce laws related to tobacco or smoking, use or sales, that are stronger than their current laws, but you would not be able to reduce what they've already have in standing. The second thing is that the reason cannabis smoke is included in this ordinance is because the state definition already includes cannabis smoke as smoking in the definition. So we are modeling based on what the state has as their definition of smoking. There was many things we took notes on, so I will have to bring those back to you, but those are two things that stood out. We did have input from the directors and community members, and some of those things in a short amount of time have been forwarded to your emails. If you haven't had a chance to look at them, there are probably folks here today that will be sharing some of those results. And as far as the tiered plan, effective 90 days upon adoption and 180 days after adoption, those were suggestions from the directors that they felt that they needed to give people time to
Adjust.
Adjust.
Yeah, the county staff especially. Yep.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and, unless you have more you want to add.
I do have a couple of things I just want to add. I just want to remind this board that this was modeled off of the Clear Lake policy, which I believe has been implemented
Since 2019.
And been successful in terms of the enforcement. So self-enforcement is a part of these things. This is not my first rodeo trying to pass regulations regarding outdoor air for smoke-free. We had this issue at the University of Central Missouri, same concerns were presented. There's not going to be enforcement, what are you going to do? You know, self-enforcement is a part of the thing, it is a culture. I believe our first year of implementing the smoke-free policy at University of Central Missouri, there was about a dozen complaints, and then after that first year, students adjusted, it was part of the orientation of their onboarding to the university, and after the first year, we had very, very, very few complaints, I would say less than five moving forward. And the population tends to abide by the rules. And so when you have posted smoke-free signs, people tend to obey that. That's part of being a functioning member of society. So I do want to remind you that this is modeled from an ordinance already in place inside this county, and there are 157 other jurisdictions in the state of California that have very similar policies to this one being presented to you today. I think the timeline for implementation does make sense. Again, it was recommended from the department heads as an avenue to allow employees to adjust, so I thought that was a very good idea, so that's, I think that's what I'm, I'll finish there.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Supervisor Pyska?
I appreciate that we finally have this. Thank you. I know this has been a heavy push for a long time, many years actually, and I disagree with my colleague on a lot of levels. This is how we can do better for our community, for our families, for our environment. We do have very strict laws for alcohol consumption because the word prohibition was brought up, and that is because, as a community, these are the choices that we want to make. We want to have our common space safe for everyone, to have modeling of good, healthy behavior for everyone. So to have these cigarette butts picked up in the playground breaks my heart. That is disgusting.
It's gross.
It's gross, and that behavior is being modeled to young children by people they don't even know. So I am all in support of this. I appreciate that you worked with the department heads, got their input, and found a way that this can be rolled out and implemented collaboratively. So appreciate all of that, and thank you so much for bringing this forward.
Any other comments? So I will add that I appreciate this coming to us. I know it's been a back and forth in order to get to where we are today. I think we need to recognize some of the reasons that we're having these discussions in the first place. Our smoking rates are much higher than a large majority of counties. I believe we are the second to last in our adult rates of smoking. And the experiences that I've personally had, yes, you should have the free ability to smoke, whether it's cannabis or tobacco, as a responsible adult, but subjecting individuals to what you enjoy when it's not just eating food and somebody doesn't have to deal with what you're eating with. When you smoke, you exhale, you allow particulates to go into the air, and you are subjecting your surrounding area with what you're doing. I've said this many, many a times, we're subjected to it every day when we walk into the courthouse, just about. And I think that it's a matter of respecting the general public space. And I think that it's a matter of respecting the general public space and not saying what you're doing is bad, what you're doing is wrong. It's just more of saying, hey, when we all come together to enjoy one thing together, it'd be nice if we can agree that the airspace should meet a specific standard so that we can all enjoy what we're coming together for, whether that's an event, whether that's going to a public agency. And there's this weird fear about cannabis permits for cannabis cups. It's illegal to have alcohol in the parks, but you can get a permit and have alcohol in the park. It's called a permit. So, I don't know why there's this weird fear that this is to cancel something. If you've put an event together, you know you can bypass laws with special event permits by having a loudspeaker and a PA system, where it's illegal to bring a PA system without a sound permit in a public space. It's illegal to sell and drink alcohol in a public space. We can change those things through special event permits, and that's all possible. So, there's this misunderstanding of what this does. This is for the regular, every day, so that we can ensure that we try to change our health metrics. Tobacco is one of the things that leads to some of the negative outcomes that we're seeing that are the highest in the state, whether it's COPD, whether it's heart disease, whatever the case might be. We live in one of the cleanest air districts in the entire state of California, but have some of the highest rates of lung cancer. I don't think you have to go far to figure out why. And so, I think this is to create a good, common space. This is not to punish people. This is to help change the future of the health. Because health takes away your disposable income, because now you're trying to take care of yourself rather than going to your retailers, going to your restaurants, and all those things. We are trying to change things and readjust so that our community can do better. And I think this is a good step. The TRL was a great step. And in looking at recreational areas, service areas, this is not saying walking down the sidewalk is now you can't smoke. This is not to say that you're in a giant parking lot in Safeway and you can't smoke. This is when you're in proximity to an entry point, when you're in proximity to a business and their entry point. Dining areas, please, I don't want to...
Yeah.
Anyways, I think this is good. I'm open for discussion and continued back-and-forth, but I think this is great, and thank you very much for bringing this to us.
Do you mind if I...
If you would like to speak, please do.
Permission to speak, please.
Yes.
So, yeah, I just want to remind the board again, 78% of this county does not smoke. You brought up the county health rankings, and I'm glad that you did. And doing my research as I was brought onboard, you guys tasked me with looking at those metrics and finding solutions to try to get us up basically to where we should be. And what I've looked at in the status is that we should be really somewhere in the mid-40s in terms of the 58 counties. But we're not. We're 57 out of 58. And I can tell you right now, honestly, that one of the major reasons our metrics are so low is our smoking rates. Tobacco is destroying our life expectancy. It's destroying preventable hospital stays. The tobacco use rate is a big score for the community health rankings. So, if you want to adequately address those county health rankings and get us to a level that we should be at in terms of what our population is and the resources available to us, tobacco is the number-one thing that we should be honing in on to try to reduce in this county. And again, this isn't about just today. This is about shaping the culture for what the future should be like for Lake County. And I'm glad that you brought up the air quality. Yes, it is ridiculous that the number-one, I think, county in the United States for air quality...
Close.
Close, has one of the highest lung cancer rates. That should be your telling point right there. Like, it is ridiculous that we have such high lung cancer rates for some of the cleanest air in the United States.
And I think that, I'm thinking of behavioral health, this is absolutely connected to substance use disorder, addiction. This is just a different, more culturally-accepted thing that occurs in our communities. But I think it has everything to do with some of the other issues that we're dealing with throughout our county. Anything else from other board members before we open it up for the public?
Just want to follow up on your thing. You're saying, of course, we need to have permits to exempt from this. It's not written in this ordinance. So, unless I hear different, if we pass this ordinance today, we can stop asking about cannabis permits for special events at CDD because it would innately violate this ordinance. So, if there's carve-outs for special events, I'd love to hear it, but there ain't none in here.
So, it's my understanding that that is not put in this ordinance because of the fact that that ability to get a cannabis permit is not already approved by your board. And in the event that that was to happen, an amendment can be made to this ordinance.
I believe we have Director Turner, who slowly made her way up. She might have a response to that.
Whenever I hear my name, my ears perk up. I agree with what Liberty just said. Currently, our task force is still considering recommendations to come before the board for amendments of Article... or the creation of Article 73. Till that point, if there is other areas of the ordinance that would require amendment in order for this board to amend the cannabis ordinance, we can just add those in at that time.
Thank you very much. Anything further before I open it up for the public? All right, let's go ahead. And anybody have a comment? Anyone wish to speak on this item? Please come on up to the microphone or raise your hand in Zoom.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Stephanie Perazzo. I am here again on behalf of NorCalfor Health, a project that works in Lake County and to help with its health outcomes. NorCalfor Health recently compiled a survey, public opinion data actually gathered August 15th and 16th in just a 24-hour period for Lake... from Lake County residents about secondhand smoke. And you were all given the flyer of information that we put together. We have provided you with an updated version of that today because we mistakenly did not put how many respondents we had in the survey in our short amount of time. So, we updated that, and we had 72 respondents to the survey in less than 24 hours, which is... anybody who's run a survey knows that that's a really, really big deal, that that many people decided to step forward and speak on this issue. It should say a lot to this board that your county needs you guys to step up. So, saying that, we are very proud of the county for taking the lead on this issue, which so clearly concerns its residents. The people of Lake County care about being exposed. They want to start the conversation, raise awareness, because this matters. And key findings from the survey that we did indicates residents are frequently exposed to secondhand smoke in various public spaces, including parks and trails, shopping centers, public walkways, outdoor dining areas, and community events. Among these, parks and trails are reported to be the most problematic, with cigarette smoke being the most common type of experienced exposure, though exposure to vapes and cannabis was also noted. Respondents expressed significant frustration and concern related to their exposure. Common feelings included a lack of consideration from others, fear for personal health, apprehension about confrontations, and a sense of helplessness due to perceived inaction and lack of support. The residents of Lake County, like everybody else, deserve to breathe clean air. We thank you for your attention and action on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Please.
Good morning, members of the Board of Supervisors. Nara Dalbaka, I am president of the 49th District Agricultural Association, aka the Lake County Fair, where we did have Lake Fest this year, which was a cannabis event. What our board did in order to have that event, because we do have a nonsmoking policy on the fairgrounds, is that we voted to lift that policy for the day. So, that is something that I think could be amended in the future if we were to vote to have cannabis events in the county, which I think would be great. And just because I missed public comment today, I want to take the time to invite everybody to the fair this weekend. Should be a good time. And we'll have nice, clean air at the fair, because we did choose to have Lake Fest as a 21-and-up event separate from the county fair. And just as a personal, private citizen, at Ag Days, one thing was a little bit troubling with the nonsmoking booth, which was when I went up and spoke to the folks there. They had models of diseased lungs from pigs. And I learned that they forced the pigs to inhale cigarette smoke. It was a UC Davis showed a pig lung and a healthy pig lung and a smoking pig lung. And when I asked about it, it was... they said that the pig had been forced to smoke. And I was a little... just wanted some clarification on that because that's something that I would hope that we could just use a plastic model or something like that, since we are trying to show the dangers of tobacco smoke. So, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure who gave you that information, but that was our booth. And we were asked specifically by Ms. Wright to bring that product there for our display. It is an educational model. They are real pig lungs, but I'm not sure where the information came from that they were smoking pigs.
Well, they said that they'd put them in a chamber at UC Davis with...
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure who gave that information.
All right. That's just, like I said, curious as a private citizen on that one. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have any other comments in the chamber before I move on to Zoom?
Hello, Greg Debrin, Blue Zones Project. Thank you, board. A couple of months ago, I was here for the Parks and Rec Master Plan presentation. And just want to mention that in that plan, there is... they've enshrined an intention to support smoke-free parks. And so, that's just great. This is just part of that ongoing innovation in light of all of the discussion on health and improving our health. I do want to make mention of the American Lung Association. No, they are not in charge of Lake County. In just the last four years, multiple state-funded organizations, as well as grassroots organizations, have participated in community education forums that they've been invited to participate in. Those include forums like Rotaries, all the rotaries in Lake County, Judges Breakfast, other educational forums, the LEED Act, the list goes on and on. Also, tabling at our many community events like overdose awareness, Child Advocacy Day, and other events. I could say that there's been dozens and dozens of community presentations over the last at least four years. And then we've probably, as a collective, various organizations and community health advocates have probably had individual conversations with at least 1,000 or two, I think, over the last four years, community members that have stopped by tables, gotten education materials, and had conversations with us, all working together on this issue. So, it's not the Lung Association, it's the community. And, you know, with our high smoking rates, we actually have a higher county smoking rate than we do... than the top states in the U.S. that have the highest, and that would be Arkansas, West Virginia, and Tennessee. So, our smoking rates here are substantially higher than those states. There's many things we could talk about. Everyone's sort of addressed the health issue part. But then if we think about economic revitalization and attracting tourism, I was born and raised in Sonoma County. We have a lot of... some of the highest and most comprehensive smoking protections. And in terms of encouraging tourism here in Lake County, we have to get on... we have to get with the program. We have to get into the 21st century. We have to know that a lot of some of the tourism targets that were even discussed and a lot of the community forums around the Parks and Rec and Trails Master Plan talked about attracting that tourism. And it's not going to look good if we look like West Virginia, if people's experience is West Virginia. No offense to West Virginia, it's a beautiful state with wonderful people. So, thank you very much, and we hope that you will continue to support this and other policy innovations.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name's Gina Lyle Griffin. I work for the Health and Social Policy Institute, which is funded by the Proposition 54. So, I just wanted to answer, address some of the things that were stated or questions that you had, Supervisor Green. According to the Center for Disease Control, secondhand tobacco smoke causes nearly 34,000 premature deaths from heart disease each year in the United States among adults who do not smoke. It's the third-leading cause of preventable death. U.S. Surgeon General has determined there is no safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke. Even brief exposure can be harmful to health. Many studies have found that levels of secondhand smoke exposure outdoors can reach hazardous levels, depending on the direction and amount of wind, number, and proximity of smokers and enclosures such as roofs or walls, like roof over an open wall. Just to give a little bit more expression to what you were asking about or what you were stating. That's it.
Thank you for your comment. Please come on up.
Hi, good morning. My name is Andrew Dobbs Kramer. I'm a cannabis industry professional, and I've been working in compliance and government relations in the cannabis industry for about 10 years. And I want to commend you all for what you're doing today to make Lake County a safer place for everybody, provide cleaner air. I just want to point out one wrinkle that I've noticed in previous smoke-free ordinances and other jurisdictions, which is kind of a conflict or a friction between medical cannabis and the smoke-free ordinance. In other ordinance... or in other jurisdictions I've seen, such as Sebastopol and Sonoma County, they actually defined smoke in a way that didn't include medical cannabis use, so that those living in multifamily, you know, units, multifamily housing situations could actually still consume their medical cannabis and use the medicine that they needed without being in contravention of the smoke-free ordinance. So, I don't know if that's something you're open to, but that is certainly something that, if not addressed, may pose challenges for folks, especially in the medical cannabis community, who often don't have a lot of other places to go to use their medicine and are often, you know, low-income folks. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. This doesn't impact the indoors of multi-unit family complexes. This is only for unenclosed areas at this moment in time. Please.
But I appreciate your comment.
In the microphone, please.
Oh, sorry. I like to make eye contact.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I appreciate your comment, but if in the future we do address multi-unit housing, we will take your comment into consideration for that. So, thank you so much.
And I see no one else getting up in the chamber, so we're going to go to Zoom, Joanne Cicado.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Good morning, Chairman Sabatier, Supervisors. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on this important topic. For the record, my name is Joanne Cicado. I use the pronouns she/her, and I live on Cobb. I am the project coordinator for RISE, which is a statewide coordinating center supporting local rural initiatives in California that are elevating health through tobacco and nicotine prevention. So, as we know, the government has a role and a responsibility to protect our children and families. I want to thank the Board of Supervisors and Public Health Department, and really all of those that participated in crafting this ordinance, for taking this charge seriously and, again, seeking to prioritize the health and safety of our Lake County children and families. As was stated, secondhand smoke and tobacco product wastes are instances where private behavior is creating a public burden on many levels, including nuisance, physical harm, and economic impacts. And to note, rural residents are more likely to be exposed to secondhand smoke at work or home than our urban neighbors. So, again, Lake County is not alone. As was stated as well, there is no safe level of secondhand smoke, and our Lake County families deserve the same dignity and protections that other California families are receiving. We also know that secondhand smoke and tobacco product waste protections in public places are not only good for our health, they're good for our business, good for tourism, and they reduce wildfire risk. So, if the board chooses to adopt this ordinance, I just want to thank you for taking strong steps to elevate the health, safety, and prosperity of our Lake County residents and the beauty of our environment. And I also applaud the efforts taken to offer cessation for county employees to parallel the effort that you're doing with this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And I have no further hands up in Zoom and no one getting up in the chamber, so I'm going to bring it up. getting up in the chamber. So I'm going to bring it back to the board for further deliberation or action. Supervisor Pyska?
I'm ready to take action. Is this a correct action?
Yes, if I may. So first, it would be in two steps. The first one would be a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance, waive that reading of the ordinance, and have it read in title only.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. And I believe we need to read the title.
An Ordinance of Lake County Amending Chapter 9 of the Lake County Code of Ordinances to Regulate Smoking and Tobacco Use.
Thank you.
And the second motion would be to approve the draft ordinance to be advanced to the next Board of Supervisors meeting for consideration and possible adoption.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[1794.42][1794.42][applause]